To the station.
We're very, we listen.
Yeah, I said, how much you been drinking? He said, I've been drinking all night. Drink it, girl. Gives you birth lagers. It gives you, you know. He said, just barely below. Also said, it must be something. And he recalibrates it. Says, blow again. Gets up. Just ride the low.
And he was so, I felt so bad.
He says, Mr. Mayor, I think you remember we drove, but you were very true. He seemed to be, he seemed to be, for a minute, going into a couple of years.
And it was like, twenty.
Taking back his car. We go.
Which I can guess at the four U K.
That kind of thing.
But I was supposed to go with you that week.
He didn't seem like he, he didn't look like he.
That last gun handler's permit. So he did that with Captain Pierce.
God.
Okay.
Right, it's Lynn Pierce.
We went to see.
Like, he's not him. Was wondering if he was gonna be there, because he really enjoyed the repose.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
They had funny dimmer than New York. I had got into Denver, I'm funny, did it, that's. Glad everything's online.
At seven o'clock, call the order here, City Ranspass or City Council meeting, November 21st, 2016, 7:00 P. M. Please rise with an application. Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for this beautiful day. We ask you to bless our citizens as they come in and out of Ranspass, all our visitors. We ask you to watch over them, make them have a good blessed trip through here. We ask you to bless our kids and our teachers and our, our public works and all our hard workers that make this community go and grow. We ask you to watch the ones that have passed away, find, help their loved ones find peace in their heart. We ask you to take care of the ones that don't feel so well, that people sometimes ignore or don't pay attention to. We ask you to do all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item five, the consent agenda. All of the five items, so the consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
Well, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item 51, a resolution of 2016-794, authorizing tax resale property located on lots one and two of block 441. Original town site, City of Ranspass, San Patricio County, Texas.
I think that was, that was part of the consent.
My apologies, thank you. And this will bring us to our public hearings, Mr. Horace.
Thank you, Mayor. Under item 6.1, I declare a public hearing open regarding a proposed subdivision or plat of Teal Lodge, block one, lots one and two. And then the second item is Southern Oaks, block one, lots one, two, three, and four. Is there someone present on those?
Mayor and council plat, number one, is a subdivision of property where the Teal Lodge is on Bay Court on the, what is known as the levee in the Pelican Cove area. The owner wishes to subdivide the property in order to leave one property to his heirs and render the lot buildable and subdivide the other piece of property for the other heirs. That, that's a simple subdivision. Requires public notice because it has been residential in the past. The other plat is plat B, is Southern Oaks. That is basically a cleanup. Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna get stopped. The, the city council several years ago approved what is called a planned unit development, a special plat for what was then Iron Gator. There was annexation orders and infrastructure orders. The plat that's proposed today is to finish up and really clean up some of that work that wasn't done. There are utilities that really need to be located and within easements, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really what plat B is about. Do we have anybody from Teal Lodge present? I know we have Southern Oaks present.
Okay. Members of the council, have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments on either one of these two proposed plats?
Okay.
If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item six, one and two?
I make a motion that we approve the plat for agenda item one and two.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Sylvia?
The next action item is the award of the bid. At the last council meeting, we secured, went, start over. Went out for bids for grant administrators and engineers for our CDBG projects. Our engineers are not ready to award. We still have some questions on the bids that were received. We had some clarification that's ordered. The only one that applied for grant administrator is Grant Works. I have Donna in the audience, if you guys have any questions for her. Staff recommends awarding to the sole submitter, which is Grant Works. And we have worked with Grant Works in the past.
Any questions from council?
No.
Do we have a motion for approval to go with Grant Works?
Well, I make a motion that we award the procurement of administration for 2017, 2018 to Grant Works.
I second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your continued goodness, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Donna.
Let's bring us item seventeen.
I don't see anybody in the audience, so I'll, I'll go ahead with this one. I was approached by a group of individuals who run the San Antonio Cemetery. I, I was unaware that we even had a historical marker within our boundaries, within our E T J, that really was at one point established to serve the Mexican-Americans in the community. That later on turned into being the indigent cemetery for the community. They do primary business with Charlie Marshall, and even as we were in the office talking about assistance, whether it was in kind or monetary, they had a call from Charlie Marshall on a person who did not have any surviving family and would be buried there. A lot of the services are donated, and the plots here sell for $200. And so that's usually a bare minimum in terms of being able to cover just the expense of opening the ground and closing it up. They've approached us for $1,500 of whether it is in kind or a monetary donation to help upkeep the grounds. They have recently acquired their 501(c)(3), gotten their paperwork in order, and are really looking for assistance to begin to be able to expand the cemetery to meet the needs of the indigent in our community. I will mention, they do not just serve at Ranspass. If there is a person in Ranspass County or in another part of San Patricio County that needs assistance, they can be buried there as well.
Who are the persons that are organizing it?
Mr. Thor, I, I don't, I didn't put their paperwork in here, I can provide that information. Mr. Torres is the one that made the introduction, Mr. Libet Torres made the introduction to, to me regarding the people taking care of the cemetery.
And are they, is, they have a board of directors?
They have a board of directors, they're required to file their financials. We do have the, the packet of information. They do have a tax ID number.
Okay.
At this point, the clarification from them as to whether they want cash or in kind really has not been made. So I would ask that maybe perhaps we table, or if you so choose to vote on it, you can do that with the clarification that it may be a combination of, of the two. I would prefer that we table it, since I don't see anybody in the audience here that is going to make this specific request.
Okay.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we table item seven, two.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
You'll get a hold of somebody?
I will get a hold of somebody and also introduce the packet to you with their tax ID.
Seven, three.
This is, this one keeps rearing its ugly head. If you recall, we received a proposal from Austin Woods for brush at the collection center site that totaled about $82,000. The request is large, or the amount is large enough that council really, we should go out for bids and try to solicit three-plus bids in order to do the, the mulching. That really was an unsolicited bid. We were looking for estimates as to how much we would need to budget. So I'm asking the council to authorize staff to go out for RFP for mulching services.
Now, do we give the mulching away, or do they sell it?
The plan would be to give it away. There, there's technologies now that dye the mulch certain colors, and so we could make it more attractive for our residents to come and pick it up for free.
Do I hear a motion to consider an act for issuance of requests and proposals for brush disposal at the station?
Well, I make a motion that we go out for RFP for brush disposal.
I second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
The next item is also a request for RFP for electricity. If you recall, during my first year here, we learned we had been with TCAP for a very long time and basically had left millions of dollars on the table over an extended period of time. This would get us out of the TCAP contract. We are only a handful of cities that are not in TCAP. This would put us into a five-year sort of master of our own destiny to be able to shop for electricity rates at a rate that we think is competitive in the market and not locked to TCAP. Right now, rates are about seven cents a kilowatt hour, and the market appears to be able to give us anywhere between four and five cents. So just to give you an idea, we spend a little more than half a million dollars every year. So to save 30% on half a million dollars is a considerable savings to the city.
See any other questions from council?
I, I think what I want the council to understand is there are a lot of Texas cities in TCAP, it's a coalition on affordable power. However, when we have issue with TCAP or we have issue with a rate provider, we're not allowed at the table. Only the six largest cities are allowed at the table that make policy. So that leaves a lot of cities out in the dust, really without negotiating power. So the benefits of TCAP for us is minimal.
Do I hear a motion for approval? Consider an act and issuance request proposal for electricity?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city staff to go out for RFPs for electricity.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Updates. Mary, do you have the council salary, or dollar?
We, we were gonna do, by, by the next council meeting, you will have a, a nice framed dollar to go with your annual salary. Multiple dollars for some of you that, that have served for a good while. Thank you for your service, it has not gone unnoticed. It, it should match the budget year, so. You, you can tell Mary if you want your dollar in four quarters, ten dimes, a dollar bill. We'll even get two-dollar bills for those of you who serve multiple years. The first update, the first date update is the municipal water district. They will be passing on a water rate increase to us with Sherwin coming offline. There's, there was a budgeted amount, obviously, they expected to receive from Sherwin that won't be received, and it is about four cents per thousand gallons. And so if you understand that most residents use between five and eight thousand gallons of water, it's less than 50 cents on the utility bill.
So, and that's just a rate we're gonna pass through?
We're gonna pass through, correct. The council voted a few years ago to allow those automatic rate increases when they're passed on to us, but I just wanted to make the council aware that will be happening. We will be also, the council awarded, or allowed the staff to go out for RFP for solid waste collection. That should also advertise in this week's paper. So our solid waste contract is up in May. It is my hope that we have something opened bids and awarded the latter part of December, early part of January to get that transition going. As directed, we are investigating several options, and one of them is also us doing it in-house. It's an expensive proposition, but I want to give the council all of the options.
Now, have we sent a letter out? I thought the.
Yes, we sent the letter out after litigation.
Okay.
That was the settlement.
Okay.
And there's also a reminder on my calendar for tomorrow morning to send another letter out. I think we've sent three letters out, but just to be sure.
Good job.
Just to be sure.
Are we requesting a signature?
Yeah. Return receipt, that, Mary? Make sure it's return receipt. The Fall Feast was a success. We served a little less than 500 people. I had comments about everything ranging from "it was great" to "we didn't serve enough turkey." We were, we were a little stingy on the turkey. All in all, the numbers have remained stable over the last couple of years. I was informed that some members of the community thought it was just for the indigent population, and it's not. The reminder is, it is really for us just to break bread together as neighbors. There's no income limit or max. If you'll notice, 13th Street has received its first paving pass. The staff has to go back out and do some corrections to it, but it is one of the first streets that we are reconstructing. So it's one of 13 that are gonna happen this year.
And it drives well.
Yes, it drives well. There's a little bit of dips, and Sid's not in the audience. Sid will tell you he's heartbroken over the appearance because he wants, you know, he's a perfectionist, and I, I can appreciate that. This is their first. I will tell you that the staff was very, very excited about 13th Street. I had pulled some of them to do our meter reads that particular month, and they, they were chomping at the bit to get back out on the street crew because they're proud of the work. That's, that's one of those tangibles you can see when you leave for the day, how much street you paid. So as Highland gets completed, they will start Highland toward the end of this month, early December, and begin work on Highland as Tommy's crew moves to Johnson, and then Rhodes, and then Beasley. So, but in between Rhodes and Beasley, they've done Porpoise Street, Ninth Street, now 13th Street, and there's that entire list in the capital plan that's to be done this year. The dog park also, you will be rece, you will be seeing the bids requesting the plumbing and electrical services at the dog park. The fencing is up. AEP has the light on order, the lights on order. There will be three additional lights that are gonna light up the dog park area. So I anticipate the dog park should be complete in the early spring. That's my hope anyway.
The dog park is open as long as the park's open, correct?
The, the dog park is open now, we haven't locked it. The, the electrical and the plumbing, I don't know if the, the council's aware, recalls the plans, it calls for a water feature. The hydrants will be water features. We're not gonna just allow the water to be wasted, it's gonna be recycled, much like a septic or a pool system, and that same water will be used to water the grass. So it's a constant use of recycled water. Our Christmas decorations will be going up the week after Thanksgiving. I know there's some coordination with the chamber that needs to happen on the Christmas tree. Our, our truck that, you know, we use to install the Christmas tree is in the shop, there was a part that needed to be ordered, so that's why it's pushed it to the week after Thanksgiving as opposed to this week. So, didn't want you to think we forgot that Christmas decorations or that we were being a Grinch.
Has someone informed the chamber?
I appreciate you letting Thanksgiving happen first.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We already had Christmas stuff before Halloween.
Are they, have they informed the chamber? Because I know Rudy's involved in that, and they are already taking out the Christmas tree.
There's been coordination with John, yes, with John Gomez, because we were waiting on one particular pin for the truck. So, yes, there's been some coordination between the Gomeses on electrical.
Because he's already loading stuff over there.
Really? Okay, well, we'll make sure we remind them. Unless as of this morning, the truck is ready, but it was not.
Do you know anything from, yeah, it's not ready.
Because I understood they were working with cable.
Oh, maybe Cable One's gonna use their truck.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I understood, that they were working, trying to work with them and try to get it.
Oh, that, that would be great.
But I'll follow up with Rudy just to make sure.
We are looking at, we are looking at pricing a, another lift. We have, we've been approached by United Rentals on a used, it has some man-hours on it, but we needed to change the lights at the Little League Park, we needed to change the lights at Community Park. The downtown lights need to be updated and painted, and so every time we rent one, it's about $1,800. So it really doesn't make a whole lot of financial sense to keep renting it. We just need to go out and purchase a second.
Not if we're using it that many times.
We are using it that many times, and our, our downtown poles and our community park poles will all receive a blasting and a new paint job, so.
You okay there?
Spider. Shoot it.
That's, that's what I have for updates. We all know how he's afraid of spiders. I'll kill it for you.
A criminal, if not a problem, it'd be just a spider, right?
Okay, let's bring us to nine, one. Considering that the resolution 2016-795 designated authorized representatives for the city investment fund. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, good evening. We're just requesting for you all to authorize me as a representative to be able to transfer money from the pool into the pool, and to have Amber as, and the person to be able to just, to call and inquire about the accounts in case I'm not available. Any questions?
Any questions, Rick?
No, so Amber would just be allowed to inquire?
Inquire and call, and, and ask the status on any transfers that are still pending.
But all transfers would have to go through you, correct?
At this moment, yes, because you're only allowing one person to be designated as the official representative. But I will share with her, but yes.
We have multiple text pool accounts, just to keep you guys in the loop. MDD has an account, as does Crime Board. The members of those particular boards have also been given access to the text pool accounts. To view, to check the balances.
Bill and Carrie, any questions? Mayor, motion for approval for item nine, one?
I make a motion, we approve item nine, one.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item 12, one. Mr. Blanchard.
Yes, Mayor, council, thank you. This, this item has to deal with the security cameras that were attempting to purchase for strategic locations around town, mostly like parks and stuff like that to help with some vandalism and safeguards. I have David Alfalter here, who actually managed the bid process and everything, and he can tell you a little bit briefly more about the project.
We went out for bids, we received four bids on the camera project. We are requesting that the award be made to Advanced Communications and Cabling. They are the third highest bidder, but they are the lowest bidder that offered cameras that would meet the requirements of the bid. It, it came down to an issue of the humidity that the cameras could handle, which of course, in our area is very important.
What about any kind of maintenance? Will they help us out with that?
Yes, three-year support for everything.
Material, post, tech?
Plus labor. Yeah, this bid covers all the equipment, all the maintenance installation, the camera system, the servers, almost completely. We're providing, we still have to organize electric to the cameras and the internet connection.
Okay. Just to clarify, where are we putting the cameras?
They're gonna be at Harbor Park, Memorial Park, the softball field, the baseball field, and here.
All the way 360 here, or just?
No, here, we're adding two additional to the current, to the current camera setup.
Harbor Memorial, softball, Little League, and City Hall.
Any questions for council on this?
And you're, you're just, you're very happy with this particular company?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, council, just to add to that, we're looking at it from a better value standpoint. We, one of the reasons we went out for a rebid is we realized, oh, there are some things like the humidity that could affect the cameras, and David put together another bid package requesting that they meet a minimum standard. Well, several of them just ignored that standard and gave the same proposal. And we're looking for things like that, even though they chose to disregard them.
We got equality for what was turning in.
Exactly.
Sweet. Okay. No other questions, folks? All right, thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion for approval for that item?
I make a motion that we award the bid to Advanced Communications, is that correct, David? Okay, Advanced Communications.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Eric, 12T.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This item is to allow the police department to purchase some new fleet vehicles. We need to purchase one to two patrol vehicles as well as some unmarked vehicles. I have a detective whose car is quite excessive in mileage, and maintenance gets high in that old state, so we want to get rid of some of the older vehicles and replace them with newer. If you recall, back in June of 2015, council approved a blanket bid for five years to, and, and that bid was awarded to Alan Samuels for a five-year purchase, so we don't have to keep going out for rebids over and over again. I've been working with Bill Denton, he's given me a price per vehicle so that I can capitalize on the most vehicle for the $100,000. Now, that also includes the outfitting of those vehicles as well for emergency equipment. And roughly, so you know, the average cost, loaded cost in a police patrol car is around $45,000 if that vehicle requires all new equipment. We try to use as much as we can by carrying over from other vehicles, but occasionally we do have to buy new equipment for the vehicles. He's already got one patrol vehicle waiting for us that he ordered already just to have on hand. So we have one almost ready to go when council approves the purchase, and then the other vehicles, I'm waiting for that price per vehicle so we can capitalize on the most vehicle for the least amount of money.
So we are reusing some of those lights and stuff, or sirens?
We try to reuse as much as we can so that we don't have to waste money. My funds are limited. This funding source actually is on an IRS seizure on a case that's, I think, like six or seven years old. It took that long to get these funds into this account. So these are the funds that we kind of put aside when they come in to cover some of these expenses, so they don't impact the budget year to year.
Okay. So how many total vehicles we getting there?
At this rate, we're looking at least three, but I'm trying to see if I can squeeze in a fourth vehicle. So that's what we're, that's why I'm waiting on that price per vehicle, because Chrysler is very unique. Some vehicles can give. us spit out of what that vehicle will cost. So I'm waiting for him to give me that list, and then I'm gonna try to prioritize it with what I know we need to replace in-house.
Hey, are these police option vehicles?
The patrol vehicles are, so if we go with the car, it will be a police package. If we do the truck, which is another one that we look for in patrol, that would be a police package. The other ones would be right off the lot.
Sure.
The other thing to keep in mind is when we went out for this blanket bid, we asked for basically bumper-to-bumper warranty. They cannot provide that on patrol vehicles that are marked vehicles, but all unmarked vehicles, Alan Samuels was the only one to give us a bumper-to-bumper warranty, and he's throwing that in. He's not charging us for that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and I believe that even includes some maintenance. I would have to relook at that bid, but it does come, he gave us a really sweetheart offer because he really wanted that blanket bid for five years.
Okay. Any questions, Ricky? Bill and Carrie?
No.
All right. Do I hear a motion for approval for item twelve-two?
I make a motion we approve item twelve-two, and the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Twelve-three, Eric.
Okay, and finally, regular stat updates for, this is for October. You can see our call volumes pretty well in the middle of the years, year over year. Traffic tickets or stops are on par. Citations are up, over 100 citations more over the previous year this time. Those numbers are right there. I mean, there's not too much that stands out. Oh, staff complaints, we had zero staff complaints last month, which is a first, so that actually was kind of cool. And staff recognition's up to 11. Highlights per department, there's some of the officers that were recognized. LSD made a comeback. I don't think I've seen LSD since the time I was in high school, but we actually arrested a guy that had LSD on him.
Damn.
One case.
Oh, heavy or something?
No, no, actually, it was a young kid who seems to become a frequent flyer for us. CID, looking down there, there was something there that stood out that I wanted to share with you. Oh, we had a, we had a case, of course, you know, the Ingleside has been having some bomb threats taking place in the school. We decided, or we had some kids that decided that they wanted to try to do the same thing here in AP. We were able to get an arrest pretty quickly. One of the juveniles went to his Facebook page and posted it right on Facebook. We received several screenshots of that, and typically you do not share juvenile arrest information, but since he shared it himself and people were bombarding us, we shared it, and we gave a remedy with it as well. But it seemed to nip that in the bud. Another thing that I'm super proud of, if you look down at the training stats, we train the entire Rockport Police Department. We used our instructors that trained their officers, which was kind of neat. And that's pretty much it as far as the highlights. This, again, will be published online if it's not already.
What is the wildlife?
Wildlife's gonna be something like a skunk, opossum, something like that.
I got plenty of them.
Yep. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, council.
This is gonna move us to item thirteen, be our citizen comment. Floor will be open now at eight, seven-thirty? Seven-thirty-one, floor's now open for anybody that's got a comment they want to make to the council. Okay, I like that. Okay, now, take care of our citizen comments. We're gonna move to our second session at seven-thirty-two. We're gonna recess for a little bit. Item's five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one, consultation with our city attorney over harbor lease, and five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one, consultation with the city attorney over A. Smith lawsuit. If you're not back, we come back. Have a good evening, have a happy Thanksgiving, and if you are back, hopefully we'll be back before eight. Have a good night.